Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including MegaBackup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Hi, Sam, how are you?
I'm well.
How are you doing, Doug?
I'm good.
You laying up okay?
Well, it gets more painful as they go along, but I guess that's normal.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was great the first couple days.
What were you doing?
Took a chunk of skin off.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I remember that.
Which one? Is it, no, it's Beer Bradley.
All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is Monday, June 13th, at 6:30. This is the Falmouth Select Board, and we will be going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, DPEW union and non-union personnel, COVID premium pay, and under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A5, to investigate charges of criminal conduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints.
Second. Vote, roll call?
Roll call, vote please.
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
DePerey, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
And I do so declare that not going into executive session would be detrimental. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Select Board is coming back into open session from executive session, and in executive session, we authorize the acting town manager to assign $1,000 of ARPA funds for COVID premium pay to each DPEW union employee and non-union town employee. Secondly, we discuss the process of charges of criminal conduct, and we consider the filing of criminal complaints in executive session. So we will open this session, and I'm going to ask for two things. One, please silence all cell phones. And secondly, if anyone is personally recording this session, please notify the chair. So I would ask you now to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as posted, this is a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Committee, and so I will turn it over to the Affordable Housing Committee. We have a presentation, Mr. Curley.
Madam Chair, if I could offer a few introductory words as the chair is coming up to the microphone. I just wanted to, first of all, thank the Affordable Housing Committee and the Subcommittee and Attorney Laura Moynihan for the research on these two programs, which you are about to receive the benefit of. And also just to suggest that what I think the purpose of this meeting tonight is really, it's a conversation, and it's to gauge Select Board initial interest in these programs. We're not looking for action tonight because frankly, staff have not yet had an ability to do a deep dive into these programs and the resources that would be required to implement them. And I don't mean by that to suggest any sort of skepticism, but just that we want to, before we make any commitments, it's going to take a significant amount of staff time to do the research and to come back and say, okay, we think we can do it, and here's how we think we might want to do it, and here are some policy decisions within these programs that the Board will need to consider. So again, this is an informational session, at the end of which, either tonight or at a future meeting, I'll be looking for your direction as to whether to spend staff resources to further investigate.
Thank you.
So I don't have any, Ed Curley, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, I don't have any prepared comments. I just would put this into context, you know, we've, for the 10 years that I've been involved with the Affordable Housing Committee, all of our support affordable housing has been to builders, to subsidize building of houses, apartments. About a year, I think, ago, or maybe more, Laura sent letters to the Select Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and other groups with these ideas that she's going to present tonight. Over the last two to three months, Laura's been working with an Affordable Housing Committee member who's no longer with us, now in New Mexico, and then presented to the Board two months ago and last month, the details of the program. And we were excited to support them and recommend that the Select Board consider, you know, implementing these as another way to increase affordable housing in Falmouth that would involve using some of the town's funds to assist homeowners or home buyers directly or renters, rather than go the route that we usually have been going through, the builders. So really, that's all I have to say, just to introduce it, and Laura will do a swell job, I'm sure, of getting the details out there.
Thank you, Mr. Curley.
Madam Chair, may I say something before?
Yes, please.
Before, or while Laura's getting ready, I would like to thank Ed for his service on the Affordable Housing Committee of nine years. Unfortunately, Ed has to step down as Chair because we have rules against staying on too long, but Ed was a great Chair, and it was a pleasure working with you when I was on the Affordable Housing Committee, and I'm excited that you'll still be around and participating, even though you won't be an active member. So thank you for your service.
I'd like to second that. The light's okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. As Mr. Curley indicated, I volunteered with the working group that was formed by the Affordable Housing Committee to kind of come up with some programs to present. A lot of the research was done based on what other towns have in place in the state. And so we took bits and pieces from other towns and came up with these two proposals. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of both proposals, I just want to mention that the two programs are very distinct in the sense that the first program, which is called the Home, we've called the Home Ownership Opportunity Program, is a program that would create units for the subsidized housing inventory. And because of that, the rules and guidelines of the program are driven by what the Department of Housing and Community Development will approve. So this would be a type of LIP program, or Local Action Unit Program, where the town would file an application and ask for the program to be approved. So a lot of the guidelines that you'll see in this, you might say, well, jeez, do we really have to do that? Do we really have to do that? Well, the answer is pretty much yes, because it's driven by DHCD guidelines and what they will approve. The second program, the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program, is not, we have proposed it not for SHI units or deed-restricted units. We've proposed it as essentially a very flexible program. It would not be something that DHCD would have to approve. It would be completely so-called in-house. So that program would have a lot more flexibility in terms of your input, staff input, other committee input. And not to suggest that the HOP program wouldn't have the ability for input, but just that a lot of the requirements are driven by what DHCD will approve. So this first program is, we've titled it the Home Ownership Opportunity Program. Some people call it a down payment program. So this would be a type of grant program to qualified first-time home buyers to finance the gap between the affordable price of a home and the selling price of an existing market rate home. So it's not about building houses, it's about finding existing homes that a first-time home buyer might want to acquire, and they apply for the grant to assist with that purchase. Our proposal is one grant up to $250,000 for a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or four-bedroom home. As far as the flexibility in this program, the $250,000 number is not a written-in-stone number, it's not a DHCD number. It's a number that we are recommending. That number came up after discussion with Gail Kelleher at Hack, who is involved in these programs. In essence, the number has to be large enough to make it worthwhile, based on the market. So that was where the $250,000 has come up with, come from. Income limits up to 80% AMI, and other affordable housing eligibility requirements apply. Maximum household assets limited to $75,000, that is a DHCD requirement. Applicants must secure preapproval for a mortgage loan and submit evidence of that, along with funds for down payment. So the home that's purchased, once the home is purchased with the applicant's own first mortgage money and the town's grant, then at closing, there's a deed rider that is put on the title to the property that restricts the property to an affordable housing unit. It becomes, then becomes eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, goes towards the town's 10% goal. There's full disclosure of that in the application package. The applicants are well-informed that when they're buying this home with the town grant, that the home will be restricted on resale as an affordable housing unit. There are maximum incomes, just to give you an example, for the current DHCD requirements for what is considered 80% AMI for Barnstable County. So for a three-person, for example, household, $78,300. So we're still looking at affordable income levels for this program at 80% or under. It has to be 80% or under in order to be eligible for the SHI. This is the definition of a first-time home buyer, and we discussed this a little bit at the Affordable Housing Committee. The first thought is a first-time home buyer might be a young person or a young couple, somebody who's buying their first home. But actually, the definition of first-time home buyer as dictated by DHCD is a little bit more inclusive. So this is the definition of a first-time home buyer. I did talk with the representative at DHCD and confirm that this is a required definition for approval of the program. This is an example of how the grant might work. So essentially, you have to take the grant figure and add it to what would be the maximum affordable sale price for that particular unit, as set by DHCD, to come up with the market sale price. So this is how the numbers would work for a two, three, or four-bedroom home. So you're looking at the market sale price, 480, 515, 530. That's just an example of, you know, how we would add it to the maximum affordable sale price. And you can see, you know, just from your own general knowledge of what the market is doing right now in the community, that that grant really does need to be at 250 to get to that potentially viable market sale price in this market. The affordable sales prices are determined by DHCD. The program could, again, this is a flexible requirement, reimburse the buyers for initial home inspections, which would be required. The property has to be reasonably, in reasonably good condition, so there would be a home inspection requirement that would be reviewed by the program administrator. So there would be a lottery process, there has to be a fair marketing process for the program. The selection of eligible applicants is based on the number of grants deemed available. So this is where the Select Board, in terms of the Affordable Housing Fund, the way we envisioned it, but again, this can be sort of discussed, or what your thoughts are on it, is that there would be a set number of grants each year. What we've talked about is perhaps three grants in the first year, $750,000 that's set aside for the program. And the lottery process would be held after an application eligibility period. So the applicant is deemed eligible by the agent who's monitoring the eligibility, and the applicant's name goes into the lottery, and three applicants are pulled out of the lottery. Those three people that are considered the winners of the grant, and they have, then have 120 days to go out and find a home. So there are a lot of different guidelines about, you know, the time limit, and then there could be an extension of up to 90 days. Again, these days can be adjusted, they're not written in stone, but that's essentially how it would work. They have a certain period of time to go out and identify the home.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
This lottery is only for Falmouth residents?
Yes.
And do Falmouth residents have to, have been living here for a certain amount of time to be eligible to be in the lottery?
I don't know the answer to that exactly, and that's a very good question. That would be something that we would have to review with DHCD, because it would have to be a fair marketing program. So I said yes too quickly, I think. I think the answer is, it's possible that because of the fair marketing and lottery process, that eligible applicants could include applicants from other communities. But the home would have to be located in Falmouth, obviously. So the home would be eligible for Falmouth SHI, but we would have to review that with DHCD to determine if there can be a, what they call a local preference pool as well, that you see sometimes with 40B projects, where there are two pools. There's a general pool, and then there's a local preference pool, so that Falmouth residents can go in the local preference pool. That would be something that we'd have to work further on, but very great question, yeah, thank you. So the application would, you know, have to be submitted by a scheduled deadline, the applicants would have to be pre-qualified for the lottery, and the applicants would have to secure a preapproval for a mortgage loan. So that is the HOP program, the overview of it. We do have a whole package of, you know, potential guidelines that we put together, but that's the general basis of the program, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so before you move on to the other program, I had a couple questions. So I understand that someone who uses this grant would have a deed-restricted home moving forward. Would that be a sliding scale, depending on how much they use? For example, if someone only needed $50,000 to be able to purchase a home versus someone who needed $250,000? Would there be a sliding scale on the resale of that, or is it just a set number or set percentage?
The maximum resale value of the home would be set similar to what you see now with affordable homes that are approved by DHCD for the SHI. So there would be a resale calculator put into the deed rider. So it's almost as if the grant would essentially be ignored at that point. So back to that chart where we had the maximum affordable sale price, that's the initial maximum affordable sale price. And then you add the grant, and you get a market sale price, but for resale, the maximum affordable sale price would go back down to the typical level that you're aware of.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, are there any limits on the type of mortgage that someone would need or would be able to get? Could someone get a USDA loan or an FHA loan? Does it matter what they're pre-qualified for?
FHA loans and VA loans would not be eligible.
Okay.
Typically, because they do not accept the affordable housing riders that go with these types of programs, currently, anyway. I mean, these things are changing, but those types of programs won't accept these deed riders.
Thank you.
But just having said that, you know, being involved in the sales, in my practice, there are local banks on the Cape, you know, there are a number of local banks that do the financing, that do accept the deed restrictions. So I don't see it as a hindrance to the program.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Chair. Do you envision this being funded in the Affordable Housing Fund with all the other projects?
We envisioned it as coming from the Affordable Housing Trust, not the CPC revenue, not the CPC Affordable Housing Program revenue, but coming from the Affordable Housing Trust that was created by the special legislation. So that would be where we would have to work through with staff in terms of, you know, what's available in that program, what's been allocated in that program already on an annual basis. But the idea would be that annually, or perhaps even more, the Select Board would review how much they want to allocate to this program for the following year, based on perhaps the performance of the program, the number of applicants, et cetera, what else is going on with that affordable trust fund money.
Madam Chair, can I follow up on that?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to clarify, so, because we have the down payment program up on the slide, is, when you were saying the program would be funded from non-CPC, non-community preservation funds, are you talking about this down payment program, or were you talking about the home ownership program?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
So that's interesting to me. The home ownership program would be eligible for community preservation funds, so I guess I'm interested to know what the thought was there.
Well, I guess just because the, with the HOP program, we felt that the money or the fund had been created with the special legislation. The CPC is, you know, taking in applicants for houses that are built already, and doing a great job with their awards to builders and developers for a portion of the cost of the home. I guess we felt that since this legislation had come about, that this could sort of give some purpose to that legislation in terms of that additional fund or monies that had been allocated to affordable housing, as strictly as a municipal action, without the involvement of developers and builders. This would be a town initiative, because the town itself is creating the units, rather than others creating the units and then subsidizing that cost. The town itself is putting the grant towards buying a unit and restricting it and putting it on the SHI. So that was the reasoning behind it, but certainly open to any suggestions in that regard.
Mr. Patterson?
I went to one of the housing institutes, and there are municipalities that are actually purchasing homes that exist. They're not expecting developers to develop them, and they're using CPA funds. So I don't see that it would rule that out.
It doesn't rule it out. I think it was just more of a, you know, when the working group sort of came together, we were looking at ways to try and basically find ways to use the affordable trust fund money that had been recently allocated in sort of an innovative manner. But there was not really any, there's not any reason for the HOP program, I think. For the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program, the CPC funding is limited to, I believe it's 100% AMI households. With our program, we were actually proposing that it go up to 120% household income. So I can talk about that a little bit, which my understanding is that the CPC revenues would not be permitted to fund that program.
My second question was, I guess it's more of a comment than a question. I'm concerned about using such a large amount of money for one applicant. When I think about the senior living across from the rec center that's at about, I think it's $50,000 per unit, and the amount of benefit that we can provide to five families, even though it's a rental opportunity, compared to only one here. So that was my reason for my initial question of the So that was my reason for my initial question of the separate fund. And I know that we need to do as much as we can here. So I would be in favor of identifying a separate fund so that we can keep that four million dollar target because I think that's an important thing to make the, our existing program sustainable.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, um, if you look at affordable housing in the context of the Housing Production Plan that you have adopted, um, we're, we're very far behind in terms of the homeownership part of it. The rental part of it, um, you know, that, that we have these wonderful agencies in town that are doing a lot for, um, creating rental housing. Um, but the homeownership part of it is, is behind. And the Housing Production Plan had recommended, um, at least, you know, the target goal of fifty-six units over five years for, for sale. And, and in the Housing Production Plan, there's a whole section that talks about the, the impact on the workforce in the community, not being able to have our teachers, our firefighters, our paramedics, our police officers, our, our, our restaurant workers, you know, our workforce, be able to buy a home in the community. And they want to buy a home, they don't want to rent. So, or the cost of the rent is, in some cases, can be more than paying a mortgage. Um, so they would not rent in Falmouth when they could buy a home in Middleborough or Plymouth and commute. And that's what's happening, right? So we're, we're trying to, a, a large part of the drive behind these programs was to address that workforce housing problem, not rentals. And, and obviously, you know, setting aside money for rentals is, is, is needed. But, but we also felt strongly that as a community, we need to do something more to keep our people in the, living in the community and being able to buy homes here. So that was the idea behind, behind it.
Turning on here, are there any protections, um, with respect to the monies paid out with these grants in the event of, say, a default or, you know, some, a, a, a death or something else? How do we protect, in some cases, as Doug's described, quite a bit of money to one applicant or one family? Is there any protection for the town or the?
Well, the typical, um, D H C D LIP deed rider, which is a standard form of deed rider that, that is imposed against, um, uh, many homeownership projects, um, would be the protection. And that would be recorded with the house, um, upon closing. Um, that deed rider has the standard provisions in it that if, um, there's a default on the mortgage, if there's a, a potential sale, that the town has the right of first refusal, the town has the right to find a new eligible buyer. So it would work the same way that it works with, um, a typical for-sale forty B home that others are building. And if somebody defaults on their mortgage or somebody wants to sell it, the same process would kick in with the monitoring agent. So that's the town's protection. Um, here, the two hundred and fifty thousand does seem like a lot, but, um, you know, what we're seeing now is that it's four hundred thousand or so for construction alone of a home and that doesn't even include the acquisition cost of the land. So, a, and, you know, when I was speaking with the HCD, um, the representative stressed to me that, the word she used was, this is a good deal for the community. And it doesn't, maybe it doesn't seem like it because it's so much money, but if you think about the municipality itself going out and building affordable housing, taking some of its own land and saying, we're going to build houses for sale for our workforce, our municipal employees, they would be spending a lot more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, and that's kind of the rationale behind it, you know, in, in my mind, when you're thinking, wow, that's a lot of money. Well, if you think of what's the alternative, you know, we want to house our workforce and, and as a municipality, the, the town decided to build it themselves, it would cost a lot more.
And it's an, it's an up to two hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
It would base, be based on the market sale of the home.
Yeah.
Plus the, the affordable costs, it would be up to, yeah. So obviously, there's a lot to these programs. And as, um, Peter mentioned, we've put a lot of work into it. We, we really wanted to bring it to you to gauge your support for the concepts that are being presented before a lot more work goes into it. Um, we didn't want to go that far unless the select board at least felt comfortable in proceeding. And also, I think, D H C D wants to know that the town select board has endorsed the concepts so that we can continue those discussions.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I asked one more question. Um, from, from your experience, maybe talking with some of the other agencies, how long does it usually take for the town to actually go through this process of putting somebody into one of these existing homes? Because it seems to me, you look at the development timeframe, I mean, it just takes three to four years to go through this whole forty B process. And these are existing homes, but I, there's got to be some legal, you know, a tran, a transition time that takes place. So what, what's attractive to me is that we might be able to turn these properties over fairly quickly and put them into use for the people that, that need them in our town.
Yes, and Mary Wagon, who's the, um, housing coordinator in Yarmouth, who came to one of the Affordable Housing Committee meetings. Um, they have a, a buy-down, they call it a buy-down program, but it's a HOP program in Yarmouth. And she said, her, you know, statement was, this is the quickest way the town will get units on the S H I. Because from a timeframe point of view, if you look at, say, opening up your application period, January one, maybe you give people six weeks to get their applications and now you're at mid-February. Then you advertise your lottery, then maybe your lottery's held in March. Then there's a three or four month period before a closing is to occur for the grant winners. So in a perfect world, if you had three grants and you had three winners and they all could go out in three months and I close on a home, you'd have three units on the S H I, you know, within six, seven, eight months perhaps. So it, it can be done very quickly. That's a perfect scenario. You know, it could be that somebody might win the grant and they can't identify a home. And then it would go to the next lottery winner, so. Um, but as far as timing goes, Mr. Patterson, it's a very good question because really to build housing for sale, you know, it's at least two years. It, it's, you know, you've got to do the permitting, which even fast-track permitting is a year to eighteen months. And then you've got to get building permits, then you've got to finance, and then you've got to build. So, you know, minimum, I think, and, and there are people here, I'm sure, that can talk about that more than I, but I think two years to three years, you know, is, is probably what you're looking at minimum to get some houses built and occupied and on the S H I. So that is one of the main advantage of the program.
Um, did you have an opportunity, is your recommendations, is it based on some research that you did into market prices? Like, are there homes for sale in this price range? I, I've heard recently that the median is over seven hundred thousand dollars, but that's the median, so there may be homes. I just didn't know to what extent you might have taken a look at that.
We haven't done, um, a formal market research. It's really just more looking at what's available on the market, what's being sold. Obviously, you know, we're at a very high point in the market right now. And, um, and on, on Giass's question at the meeting, you know, in this kind of market, you know, why would you do something like this? You know, it, how can it work? Well, the answer, I think, is that the market can change. You know, we may be seeing that change. Um, you can have private sales. Um, you can have, um, certain, you know, you can have a two-bedroom home. So it doesn't have to be a large home. Um, there are lots of different things, I think, that, um, that still make it worth trying. Um, but we have not done any formal market research. We could certainly do that and enlist the help of some agents and give us an idea of what might be available, um, in those ranges. But that's the kind of thing, again, we didn't want to get too far into this unless we knew that we had the town's support.
Are we going to look at the, are we going to look at the other program?
Yeah.
Want to do that first, Karen?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you like me to continue, Madam?
Yes, please.
All right, so this is the, what we've called the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program. Now, this program is not, again, not something that has to go to the state for approval. It's in-house. Um, we modeled this after the Bourne, the Town of Bourne has a similar program. The main difference is that the Town of Bourne, um, their program is for down payment and closing cost assistance for affordable housing units. So for people that are affordable income eligible, eighty percent are under SMI buying, um, units that are on, going on the Bourne S H I. Uh, we felt, and again, these are just recommendations, they're just ideas that we had, but we felt that we really have a, a workforce housing crisis here in Falmouth, that we really feel, felt strongly that we needed to keep our, our young people in the community being able to buy homes. We needed to be able to bring in qualified, um, workers to fill positions and have them, give them the ability to buy homes in the community. So we wanted this to be as broad as possible. Um, you may not, and that's okay, but this is sort of what our vision of it was. Um, so this is for down payment and closing cost assistance. Um, our thought was that it would go up to households at a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. Um, so you could have a household, a four-person household that's earning income over a hundred thousand, um, total. Um, the total household assets would be limited, principal residence use only. Um, this would be, um, something where the applicants would work with a first mortgage lender and they would have to be eligible for the first mortgage. Um, and that the recommendation would be that, that we enlist the help of first mortgage lenders to process the program, to process the, the, uh, grant for the down payment and closing costs, um, similar to what is being done in the community with, um, certain employers bringing in employees and offering their own down payment and closing cost second mortgages. Um, so this would be, um, up to five percent of the purchase price, but not more than thirty thousand. Again, those are just suggested numbers that they can change. Um, amounts for necessary repairs, buyers would contribute at least one point five percent of the purchase price. Um, and the grant would be closed simultaneously with the first mortgage. So this would be a type of second mortgage security. Um, it would be interest-free. Uh, we suggested it would be repaid if the house is sold within five years. Um, requirement to maintain loan-to-value ratio of at least ninety percent for five years. Again, that could be a hundred percent, that's fine. But, um, it was just a number that we had pulled out from other programs. The repayment, um, could, um, the, the, it could be, it could be repaid in full if the house is sold at any time. Um, it could also be forgiven on an annual basis. The Bourne program forgives twenty percent each year. So each year that goes by, a portion of the, um, second mortgage is forgiven and then at the end of it, it's discharged. So, um, would hap, how this program would work is that an applicant would apply and submit their information to show they're income eligible. Um, they, um, will then receive, um, a pre-approval letter from the program administrator, similar to when somebody goes to a bank and gets pre-approved for a first mortgage. Their credit's being approved and their financing's been approved, but they haven't identified a home yet. They're just getting pre-approved so they can go out and shop. So the buyer could come and get pre-approved for the Down Payment and Closing Cost Assistance Program and then go out and identify a home. And then the commitment of the funds, similar to a first mortgage commitment, the commitment of the funds would be contingent on things like this. Receipt of a purchase and sale agreement for the home, copy of a home inspection, copy of the mortgage commitment letter from, uh, the first, uh, mortgage holder, um, copy of the appraisal. And again, this is sort of the fluctuation in the LTV of loans to grant funds. So here in this bullet, we had put a hundred percent. And I think the intention was that it should be a hundred percent, but the, the ninety percent was, um, should have been corrected. But again, these are just parameters that we've come up with. There's a lot to this kind of program. Um, it's really the nuts and bolts of it, um, you know, will have to be fine-tuned. So the closing process, um, um, the closing documents and the check from the town would go to the closing attorney um, once the settlement statement for the closing is given to the program administrator. Um, the funds could be provided for repairs after the closing, um, held by the town until that's been done. So that is the Down Payment and Closing Cost Assistance Program. Um, as far as the monitoring part of this, um, and who's going to run them, the, um, D H C D recommended that for the HOP program, that there be a professional, um, lottery agent and monitoring agent that administers the program. So there would be a cost to that, um, annually. For the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program, it could be sourced out, contracted out for somebody to administer that and run it. Um, obviously, we have, um, a new housing coordinator. That would be something, I guess, to be discussed and whether that's, that's a job to do in-house or outsourced. But again, that's sort of a, a fine tuning kind of thing. Um, the, um, one thing I, I did find interesting when I was doing some reading is that there is, um, a regional, I guess, planning commission at the state level where certain municipalities have gotten together to form, um, alliances to hire monitoring agents, um, for their affordable housing programs. And there's one regional monitoring office. And then the towns that participate in the program, um, pay an annual fee. And when I read that, I thought, wow, wouldn't that be great for Cape Cod? To get some kind of regional monitoring, you know, agency involved? Because every town's got all, we've got all these monitoring agent contracts going out there and somebody's making a lot of money off all this monitoring. But anyway, it's just a thought that maybe we could explore that a little bit further. But the point is, is that, um, that, that there would be a cost to the monitoring and the lottery process because it should be done professionally for the HOP program at least. So I've talked enough and, um, I don't know if you have any further questions or comments that?
Come on up. Hi, Karen Bristinet, Executive Director, Falmouth Housing Trust. Thank you, Laura, for doing that. Um, so Doug had mentioned, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was a lot of money and it's a great deal of money. But it costs that much to build a house, as you know. So, so what's happening now is, um, the Affordable Housing Fund is giving, um, approximately a hundred thousand per, per unit, which is fantastic. And, um, the subsidy between, you know, that number and what we sell the house for is either coming from philanthropy, right, which I have had to raise for our current project at Lewis Neck Road, close to four hundred thousand dollars for that, for that project. Um, or, uh, from other sources, um, other state or federal sources. So it costs that much anyway. It's just that the town is, uh, not contributing all of that. So I just wanted to make that clear, that the money's coming from somewhere. So if this, um, program happened, it would be great because the town would be doing that project, whereas developers like myself and others like Falmouth Housing Corp., um, then we could use our funds to do additional homes, right? So, um, that means we would get the ones from these programs and the ones that, that, um, the other housing, um, developers are doing. So I just want to make it clear that money's coming from somewhere. It's not that it doesn't cost that much, but, um, you know, I think that, um, you know, we have this money and it's coming from several sources now, as we all know. And for people that are watching at home, you know, um, we hit the ARPA funds that, the four million dollars that the town approved at town meeting. Uh, we have the short-term rental money that's coming in. Um, and we have the community, and I always forget the name of it. Impact Fee, thank you. Um, and we have that money coming in as well. So, um, and all of those funds can be used, um, at eighty percent and above, um, except for the CPC funds, which are eighty to a hundred percent. So I just want to just make it clear that it just costs that much money to build these houses. And we shouldn't wait because we need to think outside the box and we need to do something other than what we've been doing. Because what we've been doing to do something other than what we've been doing, because what we've been doing is a little plodding. We've been doing as well as, you know, as I think we've been able to do, but I think we gotta step it up, because every day I get phone calls, and people are just desperate. So, um, I got four phone calls today just to find out where the application was for my project that, um, that took three years to do. So, timing-wise, this is the best bang for our buck. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd just comment that-
Mr. Brown?
When I was concerned about the two hundred and fifty, it's not because I don't believe the numbers, I certainly agree that those costs are realistic. I just wonder about the efficacy of using town, you know, it's, the town funds and allocating so much to a single applicant when it's such a random luck thing, and I wonder if it's fair to the general taxpaying public to have such a limited number of beneficiaries for so many dollars. That's, that's my only thing I struggle with.
Thank you. So we're not going to act on this this evening, correct?
There's no action required if, you know, if there is a consensus of the board tonight that, um, these programs are worth expending significant staff time to come forward with, um, you know, to, to do the vetting and do due diligence to say, yes, we can do it, these are the resources that would be required to administer these programs, and, you know, these are what we would recommend for some of the parameters on the program, to the extent that they might be different from what was presented. So again, it doesn't need to be decided tonight, but the next step is going to be for the board to tell me whether you want to proceed with either or both of these programs. And not, and that's not a final decision, that's just a, yes, spend some more time, vet it, come back to us and tell us whether we can do it and what resources are required to do it.
Yes, please.
So I think I really like both of these programs. I know I've been saying for a while we need to think outside of the box, so I'm glad that we have these outside-of-the-box ideas. I'm really interested in the second program specifically, because I looked at what rent is now, and rent in most cases is more than my mortgage. And I know it's, it's unreasonable and unattainable, and so if people can afford the rent in town, because they're, they're already here, but they can't save enough to make the down payment for a home, is, is what I have heard from several of my friends who, who work here and want to stay here. So that just, that would be my priority, uh, because I know that there's a great need for that right now. I mean, there's obviously a great need for both, for everything, um, but that would be my preference if we had to pick one to pursue immediately, that would be my preference.
I think I like the HOP program.
Well, let's do both.
So, um, I, to me, that, that struck me for a variety of reasons, so I'm, I'm wondering about the rest of the board and if you want to move forward in terms of, of, uh, going through this process and looking more carefully at it. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I, I, I think this, both of these programs make a lot of sense, and part of it is just the ability to turn around units sooner than later, because there's a cost of money, and we know that inflation is pretty, seems to be dramatic right now. Um, so there's a benefit to me that, but, uh, you know, to, to address Peter's question about how much staff time is it gonna take, I would hope we would look to other towns that have implemented similar programs and just simply ask them, what's your overhead cost, you know, and what are your, the timeframes? So that we, we can use other people's experience and maybe save a little bit of the, you know, just off the top of my head, projecting out, trying to figure out how much the impact would be to the town and its staff. But, um, yeah, the, I'm very much interested in seeing this pursued as an opportunity to increase the affordable housing, or to make housing affordable for the residents of, of Falmouth.
Mr. Brown?
Are there any grant opportunities that could fund a consultant to do some of this analyzing for us rather than dedicating staff time?
Um, I, so there, there might be, but the amount of staff time required to get the grant and the, you know, well, in, in my view, I like to prioritize going after grants that have a, a payback that's much greater than the investment of the time to get the grant. Um, so there may be grants that we could get to fund these programs, that, so that, you know, that might be another sort of wrinkle on the HOP program. Maybe, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars may very well be the investment needed to make the, the numbers work, but could we pursue it in a way where the town is, is only shouldering part of that burden? Are there some federal or state funds that we could go after to say, okay, town's gonna subsidize, you know, a hundred and seventy-five dollars and look for seventy-five thousand dollars from somewhere else, or something along those lines?
No, you go first. So, I, I feel really strongly that this board has come out and said that making housing affordable in Falmouth is one of our top priorities. So, and in saying that, I think that, that, um, Attorney Moynihan has, has donated her time, presented the group's work, and my instinct would be to, to go for it and look into it more carefully, really do a deep dive, and come back to the board.
May I weigh in?
Yes, and then I'll go to-
No, you go first.
I think, I think that you can't get to the next one until you do the next one, and if we don't start, we can't get to the next one, Doug, you know what I mean? If it costs two fifty to get to the next one and prove the theory, I think by doing it this way, time is money as well, and with two years development time, that you can equate that to money not spent, and you get some, something else on the inventory a lot quicker. And for that reason in and of itself, I think it's beneficial to, to look at more deeply.
And, and we're not committing to anything at this moment, we're simply committing to the process of taking a closer look at these two options that from, we haven't seen before. So for me, this is a really good place to jump off.
Yeah.
And we're only committing to-
We'll jump on, Madam Chair, right?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so- Uh, I'm wondering, procedurally, would it be appropriate for the town manager's office to direct our new town, our new, um, housing coordinator to start some of this work and then maybe delegate some minor research to Affordable Housing Committee, to say, these are the five things that we need to focus on, four of them require, uh, just some research, you just go get some numbers and come back? Would that be an appropriate use of the committee's time?
I, I think so, yeah. So that's exactly the type of, um, approach that I would want to talk to the housing coordinator about.
And although we're not voting, it just sounds to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the consensus of the board is to direct the town manager to continue to look into these two programs. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to either program. I'm just cognizant of the fact that we're talking about a lot of money that could add up quickly and deplete our other fund, which could slow other projects down. And I really like, uh, Mr. Johnson Stubbs' suggestion that there might be other alternate funding that we could partner with, so I'd be willing to look into it, certainly.
Great.
Um, thank you, just a couple co- comments. Again, with the HOP program, you would decide how many grants you want to commit. So you, even if you said, you know, we'll try one grant first and see how it goes, you know? And that would be, that's the, the beauty of the program, and we suggested three, but if you feel, felt more comfortable with one or two, um, you know, you make that decision. Um, the other thing, Mr. Brown, to keep in mind is that, that, the, you know, when you talk about one lucky recipient of the grant, and how do you justify that? It's not really the, about the lucky recipient, it's about the house, because the money goes to permanently restrict that house, so that if that recipient happens to win the grant, that house is going to be forever an affordable unit for subsequent owners. So it's really about the house. It's not so much about the initial grant winner. The initial grant winner facilitates the purchase of that particular house, but the town gets the house. And there may be future owners, maybe there are town employees that buy it later on, but that's really the benefit of it, it's, it's a community benefit that way. It's not that one person only benefiting, because certainly they are, but it's a community benefit that we get that house, and we also get that house to further our state mandated ten percent affordable housing goal. You know, right now, we're somewhere around eight, I think, percent, so we're getting there. But, but that house gets us closer to that ten percent, so that's the community benefit of the grant program. So whether you allocate one grant, or three grants, or five grants, or ten grants, you decide how close you want to get to that ten percent goal with this grant program.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Yep, and I'm just gonna be cognizant of the time.
Okay. So how then, um, say the first person owns it for six years and decides they want to live somewhere else or move on, and they sell the house, do they reap the benefit of this two hundred and fifty thousand, or does it remain in the equity of the home? How does that work?
It remains in the home, because the home becomes permanently restrict, restricted as an affordable housing unit when that first grant winner buys it. So that, if that person then later decides they're going to sell it, it's no different than any other affordable home that's out there now that's deed-restricted. They, they, they have to notify the town, the town then has the opportunity to find a new eligible buyer for, through the lottery agent, and that whole process continues. So that's what's happening now with for-sale homes in the community that, that are turning over. So that's why I say it, it, it starts with that initial buyer, but the affordability is in perpetuity, it's forever.
Right.
So the home, the home stays that way forever.
Well, I understand the home does, I was just curious about if there's some financial advantage to the first owner that would not be afforded to the next person?
Well, the, the first owner, when they, and, and I know we're getting on here, but the first owner, when they go to sell, there's a resale multiplier that's applied by DHCD. So sometimes the first owner might get a little bit more in terms of the, you know, what they, what the affordable sale price was, but not a lot.
Not a windfall.
Not a windfall. They also might get some of their capital improvements back, if they had to put in a new septic system in it, or a new roof, and they kept records, they could get that back in their resale price. But the bottom line is that the affordable price stays way below market value and is available to future buyers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it is inventory, yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you very much to the committee.
Thanks for listening, yeah.
Very well done.
The only time we see you lately is for these volunteer efforts, what's going on? You're gonna need an affordable house.
I've got too much time on my hands, I guess. Well, it's important.
Yes, it is, thank you.
All right. So I don't know that we have our next people here yet, so I'm going to take things a little bit out of order. Uh, I don't think we have our two students here yet. Um, Ned Haywood.
It's a note that says he's out of town.
Is he not gonna be here at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could just go ahead and do the proclamation.
Then, we will. How about, would you like to read that for us, Mr. Patterson?
Surely.
Folks, we need, we need to continue our meeting. Go ahead.
Whereas Edward Ned H. Haywood, a Boy Scout Troop Forty, has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Ed Edward Ned H. Haywood met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and of Falmouth, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Edward Ned H. Hedwork Haywood is now an Eagle Scout, with all this rank and privilege, now therefore we, Nancy R. Taylor, Angelae Scott Price, Samuel H. Patterson, Douglas C. Brown, and Edwin Scott Zalinski the Second, as select board members of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Edward Ned H. Haywood as an Eagle Scout. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty-two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And congratulations to Ned, and I loved his project at the Upper Charles River Restoration Trail. I thought that was an awesome, awesome project. And his, uh, Court of Honor date is June twenty-sixth. And we have another proclamation for the Falmouth Station, their hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Mr. Patterson, would you like to read that one as well?
A pleasure. As a, a, a member of the Board of the EDIC, especially, I'm glad to be able to read this. Up, and also, uh, maybe a thanks to Paul Dreyer, who was instrumental in bringing this to the attention of the EDIC in the town and helping us go through the renovation process, and then bringing this, uh, historical note to our attention. Whereas the Old Colony Railroad began railroad services to Falmouth on July eighteenth, eighteen seventy-two, with the stations at North Falmouth, West Falmouth, Falmouth, and Woods Hole. And whereas the arrival of the railroad to Falmouth transformed the small agrarian community and dying maritime economy into a commercial, business, and tourist center. And whereas, commercial businesses in Falmouth Village became dependent on the railroad service, including the Lawrence Grain Mill Company, Falmouth Coal Company, and Wood Lumber Company. And whereas, businesses in Woods Hole also became dependent on the railroad service, including the, the Kahoon's Harborside Fish Market and the Pacific Guana Company. And whereas, other small businesses in East Falmouth, such as strawberry growers, welcomed the addition of the railroad to serve urban markets with their produce. And whereas, large estates, many hotels, and homes were built in Falmouth as summer tourists were attracted to the beaches and temperate climate of the shore and islands. And whereas, the Town of Falmouth recognizes the significant anniversary and historical importance of the Falmouth Station on Depot Avenue on this day. Now therefore we, Nancy R. Taylor, Angelae Scott Price, Samuel H. Patterson, Douglas C. Brown, and Scott Zalinski, as select board of, of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, as the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Falmouth Bus Station. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, to be affixed on this thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty-two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to, uh, Paul Dreyer for his work on that. Recognition? Anyone have a recognition?
Um, I don't know if it's appropriate, Madam Chair, but I'd just like to recognize that we overlooked, uh, recognizing the commemoration of the D-Day invasion of seventy years at our last meeting, and I just wanted to mention and give at least a recognition of the fact that that was an important day in our history, and the bravery shown on that battlefield that day was pretty incredible, so just wanted to at least mention that today. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'm gonna want to mention one of those, actually was involved in it today, but the Falmouth Ro- uh, Falmouth Rotary Club, uh, in partnership with, uh, Warrior Warriors Transitioning Group in town, Transitioning Warriors Group, excuse me, I just hosted a golf tournament at the McCassid Country Club, I guess it is, or Golf Club. Um, it was very successful, and those funds will be used for various philanthropic purposes throughout the town, uh, human services, uh, the health, uh, uh, schools, scholarships, and what have you, but it was a, an outstanding event, fortunately, the rain stopped just in time. Anyway, and recognition to all their efforts and the support they've given this community. And I'm a member of it, I guess I should make sure I mentioned that.
Ms. Scott Price?
Again, I'd just like to recognize Ed Curly as Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee for a very long time. I know we, we mentioned it earlier, but I'd like to give him proper recognition for the, the work that he's done and the service that he's given to the town.
Awesome, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Anything else?
Okay, announcements. So I have one announcement. The Falmouth Police Department is collecting baby formula. Um, I'm sure you've all read in the newspaper and nationally that there is a baby formula crisis, and it's a regional group, I tried to, Chief Dunn was gonna send me something, it did not come through, uh, but there is a drop box at the Falmouth Police Department for baby formula. So if you're so willing, that would be wonderful to contribute to that. Other announcements?
Madam Chair, did you want to, um, oh, the executive session, did you cover that?
I did.
Okay.
I have an announcement that is listed, open ship for Sea Education Association. Sea Education Association is at one seventy-one Woods Hole Road, they are celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. The organization was actually founded in nineteen seventy-one, but they didn't actually go sailing until seventy-two, so they're celebrating fifty years this year. And Friday, June twenty-fourth, from ten to noon, the Corworth Kramer, which is docked in Woods Hole at Dyers Dock, is going to be open for people to come tour the ship. Uh, it's a really, really awesome ship, I did my sea semester on that ship, and so I would definitely encourage anyone who is interested in learning about the ship, or SEA, or sailing, or just wants an excuse to go out to Dyers Dock, um, on a Friday morning to go check it out, June twenty-fourth, ten to noon.
Thank you. Beach update. Superintendent Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good evening, everyone. Maggie Clayton.
Maggie Clayton, Beach Superintendent. So, uh, just to continue to keep the town informed as we gear up for our full season, our opening dates for seven days a week staffing and enforcement purposes is established now as Sunday, June twenty-sixth. This is actually in advance of Falmouth Public Schools getting out, as Falmouth used all of its snow days and is going all the way until Wednesday. Um, but we do recognize that other communities and non-school age people will be actively using the beach earlier. So we want to get out there as soon as we can. Um, we have hired additional parking attendants uh, in light of last year's feedback when we were short-staffed and unable to provide services um, at two beaches, McGansett and the MBL Stony Beach. So, um, we've hired additional parking attendants so that regardless of our lifeguard numbers, all of the parking lots will be monitored with at least two staff members, so no staff member is alone. It allows us to continue the sunset hours at Chappaquaite and Old Silver Residence Lot, coverage until seven thirty P M instead of the four thirty and four forty-five P M of the other parking lots. And in terms of lifeguards, um, we're pretty close to last year's numbers at this point in time. We are in a active hiring pattern, a rolling hiring pattern. The applications are still open on the Town of Falmouth website. And any questions about the job can be directed to the department or to myself. Um, the lifeguard numbers to be fully staffed, ten beaches everywhere, um, we're looking at, that target number would be fifty-seven. Right now, we stand at, um, forty-two full-time, two part-time, um, two people who have already signed up for our certification courses, the first one of which is an intensive from Monday, June twenty-seventh until Friday, July first, which will allow those who pass in our age sixteen to be eligible to work within five days. Our swim program directors have agreed to take on that additional session um, to get people on the beach ahead of July fourth. Um, we have returners who are unable to commit to any schedule but are still certified and sometimes still locally based here. So they're part of our per diem substitute list that we can go to, um, to try and fill in those holes. Besides, oh, and I was gonna tell you the parking attendant numbers. The parking attendant numbers to get to that fully staffed space is, um, thirty-seven full-time parking attendants and eight part-time parking attendants. We're trying to be very flexible with all applicants. Um, if they're not able to do five days a week, um, to do a two to four day a week commitment to hire people just for that twenty-hour sunset shift, et cetera. Right now, sticker sales have been in full swing since, since January for residents and taxpayers. But our in-person sales began at the L and T Mitchell Bath House on Saturday, June fourth. We've been open weekends from nine to four and processing the online orders. While we're ready to be the face of Falmouth, we couldn't do what we're doing without the cooperation of many other departments, including the Town Clerk's Office, who has been helping with the sticker processing, the Department of Public Works, as you've seen, um, the furniture start to go out into the lots, the lifeguard stands, the parking attendant booths, uh, new striping, curb stop painting, fence repair, et cetera. The buoys will be going out to establish a swim area with the partnership of M E S, um, hopefully this week, uh, between Wednesday and Sunday. I'm aligning staff for that. And, um, just constant open chain of communication with all department heads. We've had a couple of incidents as recently as this weekend where M E S and IFAA were involved with a dolphin that was stranded at Old Silver. And, um, I want to briefly recognize, though a formal recognition can come later, about the civilian response to a active drowning situation at Manot on Saturday. Um, a man was about a hundred yards out, got caught in the riptide of Manot. He was pulled out by two civilians, other civilians on the beach called nine-one-one so that our, uh, fire rescue team and police could be on scene when he got to the shore. A nurse on the beach started CPR when he got to shore before, um, professional medics took over. And there were signs of life when he got to the beach. So we're very grateful for that seemingly positive outcome. Um, and we'll formally recognize those people at a later date. But just a reminder to everyone to make sure that you're swimming within your range of ability, and that especially until those buoys are out there to establish the swim area, that you're cognizant of hazards such as boats and the currents that we see at some of our beaches like Old Silver and Manot and Woodneck. I believe that's all I had in my, oh, nope, one more thing. Uh, preseason, uh, parking lot hours, we've posted on the website. There's been electronic message board signage, uh, it's been in the paper. Uh, joint decision with the Town Manager's Office, the Chief of Police, the Department of Public Works, and the Beach Department, that three parking lots, um, the Goodwill Park, uh, Chappaquaite Beach, and Old Silver, both sides have been closed at nine P M on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights as of, um, as a response to our initial eight o'clock Memorial Day weekend. Um, we appreciate everyone who's been cooperative that, with that, um, messaging. And, uh, Department of Public Works has been opening the lots in the morning during the trash runs. And if we have the, any parking lot staffed to check stickers, then the Beach Department would open it, uh, in advance of that on the weekend.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have one.
You'll need to come up. I'm just gonna give you a minute, 'cause we're getting behind. I just want to thank the, the Select Board for following, always being interested in where everything stands going forward with the beaches. And I want to tell you that at the last Chamber of Commerce gathering, I did get confirmation from two parents of lifeguards whose children have been hired by local private beaches here in town, that they are actually getting paid right what we had suggested that we set our paywa, pace, uh, level at, and are getting also paid for having rainy days. And so I just want to say that we did so much homework, and I wish that we weren't where we are right now, looking at, um, a low number of guards going forward here. But I do want to say we did research, and I think we guessed really well at where we needed to be. And I hope that in the future that we can work closer together with those numbers and make sure we don't get to where we're standing here in June saying we're fifteen guards, or fourteen, or thirteen guards short. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the, the Board of Select, uh, should be, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. It is not appropriate to use the public comment period to comment on any one person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Again, the Board cannot answer questions or engage in debate or conversation during the public comment period. Is anyone here for public comment? Mr. Dugan.
Hi, Robert Dugan, Falmouth Heights, um, former clerk of the zoning Board of Appeals. Um, I'm hoping to actually clarify the record from the last week's meeting. Um, I had watched the Selectmen's Meeting, uh, that was televised on F C T V. And, uh, there was a statement made that I had not given a resignation letter, uh, when I was gonna be leaving the zoning board. And I just wanted to make it clear that my letter was submitted to the town on May third. Um, it did go to the manager's office, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, it went to the Chairman of the Zoning Board, and also the zoning administrator. And at previous meetings with town management, I had confirmed the June ninth date would be my last meeting as I'm moving on to the Finance Committee. Um, I only bring this up because I was approached by somebody in the public that saw the meeting and wanted to know why I didn't have the courtesy of giving a letter to the town. Um, so I know you can't respond to anything tonight, but if I could just get that corrected in the record. Um, so I did get proper notice, and I, I do want to make sure that the position was covered and the town wouldn't have any issues with permitting, so I just want to get that corrected.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Moving forward. Committee appointments, vote, vote to appoint committee member. Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up to the Town Manager's report. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, stop, I skipped right over you.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so actually, the first item on your agenda is the Z B A appointment. And we do need to revisit that because we had, um, three vacancies on the Z B A at the time of the Select Board meeting. However, only two vacancies were advertised in advance of the meeting. And that was not an error, that was just a timing issue, um, because it was actually Mr. Zelinski's seat that became open as a result of the election in time for the advertisement prior to, which happens well in advance, of course, the Select Board appointments, because those folks need to then be scheduled for the interviews. So, um, so there were two appointment seats, two terms that were advertised. Um, but we mistakenly listed all three terms in your packet available for appointment. So, um, we, where this is a regulatory board, we want to be absolutely sure that there's no question about the validity of the appointment. So we are revisiting one of those appointments that was made for, um, a term that was not advertised in advance. Um, so that's the Z B A reappointments. Also on your agenda, we have the Tony Andrews Farm Lease. The current lessee, Jeff Andrews, is asking for the town to exercise the option to extend that lease by a fifteen-year term. Uh, that extension has been recommended for approval by the Agricultural Commission, which has Karen control of the, of that piece of property under the conservation restriction. And the, the Select Board is the entity that, uh, enters the lease. So your approval is required for that extension. And, uh, I am recommending Board approval of that extension based on our good experience with Mr. Andrews as lessee. We have, uh, the next on your agenda is ARPA allocations. And, uh, we, the Board at your last meeting allocated all of the, uh, funds, the ARPA funds that are presently allocated by the county to Falmouth. But on further reflection, because there is an application process for that, there are two items that are, um, that are over budget and are very time-sensitive. And we're concerned that the county process to approve those applications um, may not be quick enough to award the contracts under the bid timeframe. So, uh, we are asking that the, that you reallocate which pot of ARPA funds is going to be used for those capital allocations. We are still recommending full allocation of the county money.
So you are modifying your recommendation to us, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And on your consent agenda, there are three routine items, uh, relative to installation of evergreen equipment.
Thank you. So committee appointments, we're gonna move to talk about, vote to appoint committee members. Zoning Board of Appeals, Suzanne Murphy as a full member until six thirty twenty-two. And when I go back and I look at your notes, we don't need to re-interview the candidate. However, her term will be up six thirty twenty-two, and she would need to reapply, is that correct?
Right, so we will need to advertise for the reappointment. That one was particularly tricky because normally at your June meeting, you're voting all of your reappointments.
Right.
This was a vacancy that became vacant just a few weeks before the end of the term. Um, so it was not listed separately for reappointment.
Madam Chair, I have a question about that, if I could. Uh, isn't there a longer term that's open that we could use?
So that's back to the issue of there were two terms that were advertised. One was for twenty-two and one was for twenty-four. So there is no other
Okay.
term available.
I would.
I move that we appoint, uh, Susan Murphy to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
That Suzanne Murphy, is that correct?
Suzanne's.
So we have
It's S U S, S U S A N N.
So we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will move into the Andrews Farm Lease Extension. Does anyone have questions? Comments regarding that lease agreement?
Was there, sorry, was there issue about whether there was some remaining time on the current lease? And the fifteen years were gonna be an extension after that?
So this, so this will be a fifteen-year extension that is added to the end of the five-year term, so it's not fifteen years from today.
I move
Everything looked good to me, is there anything else that we should know that maybe is not included in our packet?
So, I go, I go back to town meeting and the, the vote to acquire this land, and the reason that it was acquired was for it to continue to be a farm. And, you know, we spent a lot of time, uh, on the request for proposal to structure a process that was geared toward the sustainability and viability of the farm. And, you know, I guess what I would say is, the farm is viable. Mr. Andrews has been, you know, he's pretty meticulous about maintaining his farm, which i- is certainly important to the town. Um, he has allowed, uh, community gardens through a sublease on the property. So I feel that, you know, the, the asset, the acquisition of the farm is really working out as intended. Yeah. And I don't know if Karen Schwab is the Chair of the Agricultural Commission, I don't know if you want to entertain.
I don't, but my question to you, um, Mr. Johnson Staub, is everything that you have gone through and read, you are recommending that we approve this lease extension?
That is correct.
Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did Karen, did you want to say something since you're here representing the Ad Committee?
Um, sure. She wants, she wants it approved.
Well, I know, but this committee does a lot of work, and if they have some insights to share with us, it'd be appreciated.
So Karen Schwab, Chair of the Falmouth Agricultural Commission. Also in my day job, I, um, am the Executive Director of the Southeastern Massachusetts Agricultural Partnership. And we represent farms and promote local food in Bristol Plymouth and Norfolk County. So, you know, in the course of a year, I see hundreds of farms. Um, and I want to just reiterate what a gem you have with Jeff here. The farm is meticulous, that is really rare in a working farm. Um, the National, Natural Resources Conservation Service, um, speaks highly of Jeff's management practices. The farm's in excellent condition, he is a great grower, and he's managed a really nice balance of, um, local products at his farm stand. So, um, I'm excited that he has the fifteen-year extension early. It will help him apply for long-term funding to make improvements to the farm. So, uh, thank you for doing that, the Ad Com and Jeff will be so pleased for this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just comment, I just really appreciate the way he's embraced the community aspect of it as well. You know, it's his family's farm, but he's really welcomed the community in since taking over as a leesee. So I think it's like Peter said, it's working out just as we'd hoped.
ARPA allocation correction. Speak to us about this correction.
Sure, so, you know, I, I think I pretty much covered it in the report. What I am asking you now to reconsider is for the Ny Park Hard Courts, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, and water well treatment upgrades, two hundred thousand dollars, that those same amounts previously allocated water well treatment upgrades, $200,000, that those same amounts previously allocated from county ARPA funds be allocated from the direct award from the federal government. And that we adjust the wastewater treatment upgrades to $1,334,782 where it had been $1,024,782. So again, the totals remain the same. The difference is that we're, well, no, actually, that's not, that's not correct. The total amount is increasing because we want to fully allocate the county money. So instead of that $310,000 that we were previously going to allocate from county money, we're going to take that from the direct money. So that means an additional $310,000 is going to be taken from the direct aid. Based on our conversation last time, as we discussed, we don't want, we want to draw down those county funds right away to demonstrate that we're ready to spend them so that there is less inclination for the county to hold on to more of that money.
And my guess would be you would be having conversations with Amy Lowell, correct?
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Have we approved this reallocation of the ARPA funds?
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, if I recall correctly from the last meeting, will the town manager's office have the authority to use these funds but bringing them to review anyway? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you could have made this change without us. Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important, however, to do that based on the fact that we voted it one way. So I appreciate that.
I don't know whether it's appropriate. Please, you decide. But I know the art market is looking for maybe some additional funding to help support their activities. It's coming up later on, but I just didn't know whether there are ARPA funds that might be available at some point to subsidize their efforts here in Falmouth.
So I would just say, I mean, we can't act on that tonight, I don't think, because it's not on the agenda. But there are a lot of things the town could spend ARPA money on. That's one of a million. To this point, we've been talking about priority capital projects. It would be my suggestion that you limit it to that.
Thank you.
Yes, please. I had an inquiry from another group in town that was interested in using ARPA funds in that way. And my reply to them was that we were focusing on capital projects, but that we would discuss at a later time.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to read these, but if anyone wants to hold them, if you have questions, please do so. A, approve Eversource petition to install approximately 60 feet conduit and cable under Town Road northwesterly, starting at handhold 293 H2A, and to install one new handhold labeled 293 H2A in public row on side of road at base of existing pole 293-2. This work is to be done to provide electric service to 8 Mass Road. B, approve Eversource petition to install approximately 38 feet of conduit and cable under Town Road and install one new handhold labeled 1029 H3A in public row on side of road at base of existing pole 1029-3. This work is to be done to provide electric service to 17 Shorewood, Shoreview Avenue. And the last one, approve Eversource petition to relocate one JO pole labeled 211-3, approximately 30 feet southwest towards pole 211-4, pole to be relocated for customer at 58 Montag Street.
I'd like to hold that one for discussion, please.
And we did get a letter on that, so I have a hold as well.
Yep.
Begin the discussion, Mr. Brown?
So I did review the lady.
We can move the, well, actually, let's wait and do this one. We'll hold it, we'll talk about it, and then we'll go back and we can do them. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
I think that the person who sent the letter made some valid points. And when I look at the plan, I find it odd that the pole would be located to the other corner of her property as she pointed, I think it's a lady, I'm not sure, it's a lady or a man, that the person who's commented, pointed out that they already have a pole at the other corner of their lot. And when I look at the overall plan of the street, it seems like moving the pole a shorter distance to the other side of the lot line at 58 makes more sense. Not that I'm any electrical engineer, but it seems closer to the midpoint between these properties. And I didn't see any obstructions that were obvious. I wonder what the thinking is, putting two poles in front of one property and then having this long stretch with none. So it just didn't seem like it made sense to me. I don't have any insight on that.
Can we hold that one for further information?
I think we're going to need more information then.
Yep.
At least answer Mr. Brown's question.
Yes, and address the issues as outlined.
Right.
So that you just articulated. So do I have a motion to approve A and B?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, do I have a motion to hold C?
So moved.
I second Mr. Brown's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Review and vote to approve minutes of meetings, public session, May 23, 2022.
I have some edits to suggest on May 23rd.
Okay.
Minutes. On the second page, under Town Manager's preliminary report, that first line, I think we need to put timber license to specify what license is being discussed. So it should say, Mr. Johnson, so notice a public hearing regarding additional two lanes to the timber license, because that's the facility here. On the page four, oh, coming from number four at the bottom up, three paragraphs, it says, Mr. Patterson noted the Sharon parcel. I think that should be the Beagle Lane parcel. Was looked at for housing. There was concern about natural, that's actually the one I thought we were talking about. Well, Beagle Lane leads to Sharon Ave., which leads to the property. So it's not, not really wrong. Okay. Well, then, fine, we can leave it as Sharon. I didn't recognize the street number.
So that paragraph and the next one both has Ms. Patterson and Ms. Brown instead of this one.
Okay. Thanks for that correction.
You're welcome.
That's the only, with that.
More corrections on the 23rd, Mr. Patterson? No?
Nope. With those edits, I would recommend that we approve and release for public access the meeting minutes of Monday, May 23, 2022.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May 26th.
Yes, I found them to be accurate, so I would move to approve and release the meeting minutes of Thursday, May 26, 2022.
Yes, please. Before we motion to release them, the paragraph that starts with the COVID-19 payments, would that be a problem with what we just discussed in executive session today, to release them?
Are we talking about public session, May 26?
That's what I'm talking about. Public session on May 26. I don't think that's it.
Oh, I went ahead. My apologies.
Okay.
My apologies. I wasn't going to have executive session on the 23rd.
There's just basically an announcement. So I moved approval and release for public access.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, let's see. The next executive session, I think I can suggest some edits. The last, last paragraph before you see the bolded section, there's a reference to A. I think that should be Unit A. And then I would say, and DPW staff. Is that a clarification that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, then I would move that we approve and not release for public access the executive session minutes of Monday, May 23, 2022.
Second. The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If they're approved, would not be released.
That not released, yes. Did I not say that?
No, you did.
Okay.
I just reiterated it.
Thank you.
And I jumped ahead, so I apologize.
No, no.
Okay. Town managers supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to mention again, it was mentioned by Peter McConerty, DPW Director at the last meeting, but the difficulties that Republic Services is having with pickup, they continue. It's unacceptable. I want to, you know, make the public aware that it's not something that we take lightly and we are seeking to address. Specifically, there is a new contract that just took effect with the same operator as of June 1st. It is our expectation that with the increased cost, they will have the ability to hire additional staff and meet their requirements. And we do have improved contract terms to be able to hold them to that, so it is our expectation that that is going to improve. The Mayflower Wind Public Forum, I wanted to comment that anyone who was present is clearly aware that we heard a lot of strong opposition to the proposed landfall and installation of electric equipment in our community. There was also some concern expressed about a lack of transparency and, you know, I guess I understand that because it's been two years and it seems like, you know, there hasn't been a lot of detailed conversation about what's happening. But there's very good reason for that, and that's because there's not much happening. So Mayflower has submitted, they filed proposals that caught us off guard a little bit. We were a little disappointed that they filed the proposals when they did, be that as it may. They filed a preferred and an alternate location. We have retained expert consulting engineers to take a look at that. But all we have at this point is 30% designs, 30, so they're not complete designs. And at the direction of the select board, we have pushed back on those two locations. So we're, you know, we don't, you know, we consciously have not had a lot of public input on the details of what has been proposed because we're hoping that it doesn't happen. So I just sort of wanted to reiterate that I do believe this board has acted very appropriately and methodically, hiring the expert counsel that we need to address this and, you know, not repeat any past mistakes. And we do have an announcement from Mayflower that they are going to be changing those plans, not necessarily the landfall locations, but the engineering design will be changed from high voltage alternating current to a high voltage direct current. And that's a pretty significant change in the design in terms of the number of cables, in terms of the size of the duct banks and the substation. So that, but that's, that's a sort of, it was presented by Mayflower, but again, we don't have any designs to really have our consulting engineers take a hard look at yet. So in part, I wanted to assure the public that the board and the staff are addressing this issue in a thorough way to protect the town's interests, but also to put the public on notice that there may not be a lot of activity for a while because we're in waiting mode for Mayflower to present their updated designs.
So I got some feedback on the slides that I read from at that meeting. And I think, again, being a little bit more careful about how we use language, because I thought the feedback was good in that when I went back and looked at it, the way it was presented was that it is going to happen. It's just how is it going to happen? Well, I, I went back and I looked at the PowerPoint, and I happened to agree that that was really good feedback. So being careful about how we present and what, how much control we really have over this project and what control we don't have, I think we need to be really clear about.
Yeah, no, it's good feedback.
Mr. Brown and then Mr. Patterson?
I just think it's also important to share the limited amount of information that we've been privy to. We haven't even seen the plans. They don't even trust us with reviewing their plans. I mean, it's not like it's a lot, like you said, there's not a lot going on, not a lot that's been shared with us, so unfortunately.
Mr. Patterson?
I know a number of the citizens raised issues about noise that's going to come out of one of these substations. And since they've now decided to go with direct current, that's not your typical 60-cycle transformer anymore. That's a different kind of processing, if you will. And I just wanted to know whether we could get one of those contractors that we have working on our behalf to take a look at that and give us, you know, some sense of what we could expect out of that type of power conversion.
So absolutely. I think we want to wait till we actually have a plan that they can evaluate specifically. But yes, that's the intent.
Anything else?
Yes, one last thing for my supplemental report. I wanted to publicly notice, and I did share this with the board by email as well, that we were notified by the Massachusetts Department of Environment Protection that they will be proposing new septic system regulations to address nitrogen contamination. So these are, they are described as a pretty major overhaul of the regulations that will affect Falmouth and all other communities that have impacted embayments. To date, we've received only an outline of the proposed regulations. They don't have a lot of details to them. The DEP has asked to meet with staff and get some input. We are looking to engage some members of our Board of Health and Water Quality Management Committee in those meetings. And as we learn more, we will be reporting on this issue further.
Thank you.
Was there any discussion about comprehensive permits and denitifying those? Are they protected unless?
So there, I mean, a lot of those details, we don't really understand yet. They appear to be parallel issues.
Okay. Concentrated loading.
Well, it's confusing because it's, I mean, it's exactly the same issue that we're talking about.
Right.
Right. There already is a Section 208 process. There already is a comprehensive wastewater management process. But what this is about, as I understand it, and again, with the limited information we have, there, that process at this point doesn't really have hard deadlines. It's fairly, you know, you have to have a plan, but it's fairly lenient in terms of how quickly you implement the plan. The gist that I'm getting from this new regulation is that if a town doesn't have a plan that it's moving, that it's implementing sooner rather than later, then there's an enforcement mechanism that can be brought to bear on individual owners of septic systems. But again, there's a process to have a town-wide plan that prevents that from happening. So I probably said about as much as I know at this point.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I might mention that I did tune into the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association meeting, and Andrew Gottlieb, who's the, I guess, the chair of the Association for the Protection of Cape Cod, actually gave us a pretty good rundown on this and the status of it right now. I guess the draft, official draft, if you will, regulations will be coming out in October, November, so this is sort of a preliminary outline. But I guess this is being driven by a lawsuit from the Conservation Law Foundation against the state and particularly Cape Cod since we're probably the area that's suffering most from septic system nitrogen that's coming into our aquifer and getting into our estuaries as well as our freshwater ponds. And apparently, according to Andrew, it does apply to both freshwater and estuarian resources. So it's pretty broad. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of pushing and shoving on this as it works through. But it's pretty extensive and reading, I mean, I was listening to him talk about it and then I read this outline. And this is going to start pushing people with today's Title V systems to have to go to more innovative alternative systems or pushing the municipalities to extend their wastewater treatment facilities, which I think is, from my personal perspective, thinking about future generations, is exactly what we should be doing anyway. He did mention that the governor has put $200 million into the proposed budget for '23, '24, I guess it is, this next budget cycle, for the purposes of wastewater treatment. And it's targeted toward coastal communities like the Cape. And so there's feeling that, you know, if we can get our projects proposed and started down the tracks or getting closer to shovel-ready, that we should be, we could be able to tap in on this and advance some of our wastewater treatment planning at this stage. So I just mentioned that, but that was the 20-minute discussion that we had as part of that meeting on Friday. And I'll mention again, but the Cape Cod Commission is having their August 1st and August 2nd Cape Summit. And these issues are discussed. And these issues are discussed by, you know, very highly professional people at those issues and they affect us. I mean, so we just, I, I've really gained a lot from going to the Cape Cod Commission forums and meetings and what have you. And, you know, I would strongly recommend, if you can fit it into your calendar, it's going to be in a hardwood shed that will cost at the Quosset Resort. It's a beautiful place. It sits on Pleasant Bay, so it's a great way to spend two days. And the town has picked up our costs in the past, so if you put it in your calendar, I strongly recommend it.
Mr. Brown?
I did also attend the Cape Cod Commission update on their freshwater ponds initiative. And they do intend to create a database of all the water quality of all the freshwater ponds. They're trying to identify different pond groups right now. And there's several in Thalmud that have already joined in. And they are committed to actually funding the testing, which is the, the difficult part of water quality is the, paying for the testing of the monitoring. So I think they're really on the right track with this new ponds initiative. So that was en, encour, encouraging. And just to comment on what you were talking about, the Conservation Law Foundation's original lawsuit was against the DEP and the Cape Cod Commission for not enforcing the individual septic owners as point loads. So that is what, you know, they're going to target now, the fact that for us not implementing sewers in these areas, we're liable and the state is liable for not pushing their own initiative to sewer these areas in a more timely fashion, so. It's just a continuation of that from a few years ago.
Anything else? Select Board reports.
I kind of just gave you mine.
The same here.
I was just thinking.
I'm done.
But the Day of Portugal on Saturday, the eleventh, Select Board member Angelique Scott Price and, and Scott Zelinski were there. And it was really a wonderful, wonderful day. I haven't been there in, in ages and, so that was really, it was really fun. It was nice to celebrate with them.
What they're doing with the, with the children and helping enrich the culture.
Yeah.
It's, and the dancing and the, and it gives them something to be proud of that they, it may not occur to them. And Mrs. Mallow and others were phenomenal and they were very, very welcoming to us and appreciative of, of, of our presence there. And I had a great time. Great, great time.
I think I've been six different times. It's only COVID that docked me out and, except my granddaughter knocked me out on Saturday. So, but I, you know, it's definitely one that I've enjoyed always being part of. And it's just nice for them to celebrate their rich culture. And you see so many familiar faces. I mean, they have given back to this town in so many ways, you know, so it's.
The food isn't bad either.
It sure isn't.
And they hold down the breakfast in the winter when the Holy Ghost isn't doing it on, you know, first Sunday of the month.
Was that right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Other, other reports from Select Board members? Okay, how about future agenda items? Any suggestions?
Uh, the trash contract and ways to monitor and manage and enforce, if we could. I mean, if you think that's something we should take up.
I have a few questions too.
If you feel like you don't need any help, I mean, I defer to that, but just thought it might be something we should talk about a little more in depth.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, certainly welcome your suggestions. I don't know that it, you know, defer to the Chair. I don't know that we need a, an agenda item to talk about it. But, you know, I'm happy to keep the, the public and the board updated on, on what the status is.
I'll let you guys work it out whether or not we need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Zelinski?
About that?
Or any, or any future agenda items?
No. Well, if you're not going to put it on the agenda, I would have a question about it. And that's on the agenda.
Okay, well, we can, we can certainly.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is, yes, the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh. Okay, thank you.
Oh, we go, we go. Yes, not really.
Not really.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, Madam Chair, on that, your next meeting.
That's right.
It's, is a hearing?
That's right.
I just want to skip over that, maybe, maybe mention that.
On the twenty-first, yes. In this room, I believe, at one o'clock. And prior to that, we will, I sent an email about an additional meeting that I'm looking at for the twentieth. So if you could get back to me on that one.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And then our next regular meeting is the, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Okay. Will you adjourn?
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.